Good evening folks, call the meeting to order. Just a couple of announcements. I'm Dan McKinley, the moderator. First order of business will be to elect a moderator. Beside over that, we elect a new moderator. Also want to note that FORCA, the Onion River Community Access is recording tonight's meeting. Those are available on onionrivermedia.net. You can just punch in Rochester and you can see the results of tonight's meeting online. Our business tonight is on page one of the Rochester School Report. And I want to remind you, are there any non-residents here? So one non-resident. If there are no objections, we always let our guests speak at our school and town meetings. So if there are no objections, we'll let our guest speak. Just remind our guest that you can vote on articles. And I'll read a warning. Rochester town school district warning. Illegal voters of Rochester Town School District, Rochester, Vermont are hereby notified and warned to meet at Rochester High School Auditorium in said town on Monday, March 26, 2018 at 7:00 PM. To transact or follow the business. Article 1, we elect a moderator. Article 2, to elect three school directors for a term that will expire on the date the district ceases to exist pursuant to the merger study report and articles of agreement approved by the State Board of Education on October 18, 2017. And Article 3, any other business necessary proper before the meeting. Any announcements or anything that the board wanted to do before we get into the first article? Oh yeah, some handouts?
Yep, Frank has provided some handouts down here. We do have a copy of the annual report for anybody to print and bring it. There is the town treasures report that has the fund balances that I guess was not ready at the time of printing but are available now. And also a debt and balances that we promptly transferred that actually pulled out of the articles agreement if anybody understood any of that information.
We'll move to the first article. Article 1, to elect a moderator. The nominations. Martha?
I'd like to nominate Dan McKinley.
Dan McKinley's been nominated and seconded. Any other nominations? Hearing none, no objections, we'll close nominations and ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Dan McKinley for moderator. Article 2, to elect three school directors. Term will expire on the date the district ceases to exist pursuant to the merger study report and articles of agreement approved by the State Board of Education on October 18, 2017. Would you like to move this article? Seconded. So this article has three directors in it. We're going to divide those into elections for three separate. It's not like it's going to be a slate of, it will be three separate elections. So we have nominations for a board of director for this term that will expire. Amy?
I'd like Jeff Sherwin.
Jeff Sherwin's been elected. Seconded. Any other nominations for this seat? Hearing none, no objections, we'll close nominations and ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Jeff Sherwin for school director for the term that expires on the date the district ceases to exist. For the second school director. Nominations? Frank Russell? Frank Russell's been nominated.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any other nominations? Hearing none, no objections, we'll close nominations and I'll ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Frank Russell for school director for the term that will expire on the date the district ceases to exist. The third school director seat. Any nominations?
I'd like Megan Payne.
Megan Payne's been nominated, seconded by you all. Any other nominations? Hearing none, no objections, we'll close nominations and ask clerk to cast one ballot for Megan Payne for school director. Term will expire on the date the district ceases to exist. Article 3, to conduct any other necessary and proper business that may legally come before the meeting. Amy?
Dan?
Yes.
I was just curious if there could be any discussion about the Dandelion Daycare Building?
Can we get in front of the mic and just clarify?
There's a question about the, what the Dandelion Daycare?
Yeah.
Building?
Yeah.
Yes, that is actually on our agenda for the next meeting, which is our... The Dandelion Daycare business is on the agenda for the meeting that actually follows this meeting, our regular scheduled school board meeting. We do need to reorganize first after this meeting concludes and we do need our superintendent to do that, so hopefully we can transition into our regular meeting.
Thank you.
Any other business, questions, comments?
Will the school forest also be discussed then?
Will the school forest also be discussed?
It's not specifically on the agenda.
Okay, if there's nothing else, other comments or questions? We'll accept the motion to adjourn this town meeting, town school meeting. Are you going to go right into your regular meeting or do we continue?
Have we closed this meeting?
I was about to, but...
Yeah, we would like to go into our regular scheduled meeting, but there's the reorganization of the board which has to take place after we just concluded this meeting.
So you're going to need to take a little break, meet some more people here?
Okay, well, we'll call Bruce and see if, when he's going to be here or if there's another officer that can do it in his absence. But yeah, we do want to go into our next meeting.
So take a motion to adjourn and then Nancy Woolley will return. Seconded. All in favor? Aye. Close.
Can I call this meeting to order? This being the first meeting of the Rochester School Board for actually the next three months with the newly elected members. I usually start the meeting until we get a chair and then the chair takes over and goes from there. So if we can call this meeting to order at 17 minutes after 7:00. And I'd like to skip to the reorganization part and come back to your adjustments to the agenda and the consent agenda and the other items. If nobody has any objections. Okay, hearing none, I would like to call for nominations for a chair for the Rochester School Board until July, until June 30th of this year. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. May I ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Jeff Sherwin? Are there any other nominations first? I guess there can't be since one made the motion the other second. So Jeff, so declare that you are the chair for the shortest election period in the history of any town.
I'll hear your nominations. I'll hear your nominations for vice chairperson.
Nominate Frank.
I second Frank for...
Any other nomination? Ask for ballot. I'll hear nominations for president of the board.
The second. The other one. Now, logistically, do we still need three members on the board?
Until there's a change in the voting, yes, you do.
Okay, so currently, does the members of the new district are just in waiting or are they part of the board right now as well?
Well, if you've been reading the emails I've been sending, there's still, everything's status quo until the board convenes, so...
So they are kind of just in waiting, they're in a wait.
So right now, it's me, Frank. So we're finding myself aiming at Frank. I was the one member, and I think Frank is the alternate to WSB.
Yeah, so Jeff, the one member, and Frank, the alternate.
Recording secretary.
What? Is that different? I think I guess...
The recording secretary takes the minutes, the clerk is responsible for the meeting. So it can be one and the same or it can be two different people.
Can we appoint a non-board member?
Yes.
Can I appoint Jeff to be the recording secretary? I'm doing anyone.
I think you did. I think you just did.
All right, two members for about AP now?
No, it is one and an alternative, alternate.
How long did that take?
I guess that's how it has been for everybody else and I have no idea why we're so sore on the ad, like, because it has been horrendous trying to get three signatures sometimes on snow days and... I would be happy to sign AP. I come to school quite often. If you're not comfortable with just one member, we tend to change it to continue to have three, but it does sometimes close a logistical problem of getting all three signatures in time.
Are you the member? As opposed to the alternate?
Yes, I was saying I would be the member, but I was just confirming with Jeff that...
I would like to agree myself.
Do you want to go to, can we just go to two and an alternate or you want three? Tyler, you're going to commit to, you know, signing AP one?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then you're open.
So who are then? Amy, myself, the one, so... And then Frank is an alternate.
Tony.
Tony. Frank is an alternate.
I would do with Megan too, remember?
And Megan, moving everybody. Two members to the negotiating board, I'd be happy to do that as well.
Jeff and Frank?
Point a true officer.
The Mark Lyle?
Yes. Newspaper and radio station for official notices.
Harold?
Harold.
96.1 is what we did at the Unified Board for radio station. You know, it's a W-1, D-E-V or something? Yeah, seems like a popular one. And that's 96.1, you said?
Set the date, time, and location of the regular school board meeting.
Okay, so the new district of Rochester Stockbridge District Board has set their meetings to be the first Tuesday of the month. It would be convenient if we all wanted to try to meet at that same time place, it'd be for a longer, robust day of meeting, but...
What type of your meetings?
Six. It would just delay the roots from that, you know, one multiple...
Okay, I don't think so.
Cannot hold too many simultaneously, no. It would have to be...
Trying to get away from that. Wow, too many simultaneously.
Right, and if Stockbridge did the same thing, then it would be, there would be three, potentially three meetings, but they probably would not last, it's only going to be for another couple of months, really.
I'm hoping that the new board will change to Wednesdays so that I can do Hancock and Granville and then go to Rochester and Stockbridge while I'm still over here.
On Wednesday, they have theirs on Wednesday?
They have theirs on the first Wednesday, but we can discuss that later. Oh, we can discuss that later.
Well, that's just the time of the new district.
Can we have our meetings first? That'd be quicker to get us out of here.
I'm available earlier in the day and then, yeah, I mean, I want to meet at noon, I can...
I think our meetings are going to be much shorter than we got.
Definitely.
Maybe we meet at five then?
So do we need necessarily sort of time, can we just say before the district meeting on the first Tuesday of the month? Does that make any sense?
Yeah.
But if we try to schedule out, are your meetings, would it be waiting for you to finish?
I would say so. Or we can just keep it to the Wednesday, but...
Doesn't work for you, does it?
I've been making it work, but...
We're only talking April, May.
At five? Yeah, five works in Rochester. You're going to do it at five on Tuesday, but Bruce will have to come back over.
There's only three meetings we're talking about.
Right, right. So that works, if three meetings, having them before, I think it'd be fine.
But is that going to be alternating now?
Probably, between Stockbridge and Rochester, I would think so.
And I would recommend that our first meeting pending, pending what happens, if there's any business that needs to be taken care of beforehand, our, the first meeting would be April 3rd next week. I don't know if we need to have a meeting next week or if we need, if we just wait until May 3rd.
Just wait until May 3rd.
Is that, do you, what you want to do?
Is that the date?
That would be the date, would be the...
Let's do that.
First Tuesday in May. Pending no other things that need to be taken care of prior to that. Okay. Again, we can always call a special meeting.
What were our posting places, Max and Noah?
Post office, clerk.
Post office and the town office.
In the school. Do we... Office, office. Office. In the school. And it gets posted on the website? Is it a requirement that it needs to be on electronic media up on the website?
I don't think it's a requirement, but it is posted.
It is posted up there, okay.
Now, Heather, I don't know what that means.
Anything else you want to discuss? You have a certain position in mind, you want somebody that we can go?
Bring us dinners? Okay. Then we go back to the agenda? Or adjustments to the agenda?
The principal's not here, so we...
Bonnie's in Connecticut, we knew this, so we won't be able to be a report for...
So we're going to table item seven?
Yep.
And how about Rochester's school board to-do list? Do you have anything for that?
It's really the Dandelion. Is, do you know, your mom's going to be here? She's still at...
Busy select board meeting.
She's still at the select board meeting.
Jeff, do you want to go back to the three minutes, three, one, two?
Yeah, I'd like to keep those on the agenda at this time.
What's that?
What to do last on the...
Patty's here.
Okay. Yay!
Here, a motion to approve the minutes of Wednesday, December 20, 17, regular board meeting. So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Approve the minutes of, motion to approve the minutes of the Wednesday, January 24th, regular meeting. So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
3.3 has been tabled. Bring us to board communication and comment.
Okay, well, I wanted to communicate on behalf of the Rochester Stockbridge Unified District Board that there has been some changes in the annual meeting for the new district and the final budget review and warning. The original meeting to vote on the budget was supposed to be April 24th and it has now been changed to May 15th. Time and location is still to be determined. We will hopefully determine that at our April 3rd meeting.
What?
Uh, no.
You want to tell them the reason why?
Oh!
That we're nowhere near a budget yet?
Okay, but the reason why is because we have, we haven't had time to complete the budget process and we are still working on gathering numbers and fleshing out some ideas and possibilities and we'll be working, we have a number of budget meetings coming up for the new district if anybody's interested in coming to them. There's Wednesday, the 28th of this month, then our regular meeting April 3rd, which is a Tuesday. And then hopefully, we will have final budget review and warning approval on April 12th. So there's basically two more working meetings, hopefully the final meeting will be more of a final review.
What draft do you want? Five?
He says five, it's only the second time we've ever seen it though, so. Not sure where the other drafts have gone. But we definitely are working really well together, there's a lot of exciting ideas going on, but definitely a lot to discuss and to figure out.
Move on to six, public communication.
Do you want to suggest maybe saving that? Because there's, it's on again at 11?
I saw that.
We can do it both. But, yeah, okay.
All business, 8.1 Rochester's school board to-do list for July 1st, 2018.
As we know, we have a variety of people who use the building. The white revendicators currently use the auditorium. We have the Rochester shelter team that uses the elementary school in emergency situations and we want to make sure that we have language going forward into the new district when we combine that continues that use, those use agreements. Has the lawyer been able to come up with anything?
I sent, what Amy was looking for was some kind of a form and a policy around how this building, or either of the buildings, can be utilized and the steps we go through in order to make that possible because they wanted to continue to leave it a community, opportunity for the community to use it. I sent a request to our attorneys to see if they have a form. I'm sure we'll be able to find something that we can doctor and if the board accepts. So that's one of the things that we'd like to do before you go out of office and we finish.
So those are the only two that I, well, we do have the Rochester REC committee uses, the kids use the fields. Is there other groups in the community that, you know, currently use the building that we want to make sure, yeah?
What about Suzuki?
Suzuki, yeah, I think that's good.
REC includes the summer program, the after-school program?
One Planet? One Planet Summer Program, is that, is the One Planet Summer Program separate from the regular year-long program or is it...
They do it differently in the summer, so last year it was in Stockbridge, I don't know if they were going to go back and forth.
I think it's in Stockbridge this year, but there is an hour at the beginning and the end that kids are in Rochester, like an early drop-off and a late pickup, so they can accommodate longer hours and they get on a bus and go back and forth to Stockbridge. So they will be here needing some use of the building morning and afternoon. Well, I encourage you guys to think if there is other, you know, community organizations that use the building currently or, you know, just get in touch with me so I can be aware of it. Right, the players, the players in the shelter, Rochester Shelter were the two that were high on my list.
What about town meeting?
Town meeting? Yep. All right, well, I encourage you, if you think of any, please contact me or us.
8.2 Dandelion Daycare.
Okay, I actually would like to ask Patty to come talk to us a little bit about some ideas with the Dandelion building. We had, in our agreement, excuse me, with Stockbridge, we had agreed that we would seek to try to sell the Dandelion Daycare building. We did find that the Dandelion Daycare property is all part of the school property, so that makes it a little trickier when you go to sell it.
The elementary school property.
Isn't the elementary and the high school property one? Seconded.
I believe so, but I don't, I'd have to look at the research that our attorney did on all of that.
Okay.
And I don't have it handy.
Which I believe Dandelion is also part of the campus.
Yeah, I have, it does not have the high school in it, but it does have the Dandelion and the property, really just shows the elementary property in the back, software property, shows the portion of property that's owned by the town and...
We got that because we wanted all the building, the elementary property.
Yep, actually, just prior to this meeting, Gopher was talking to me that the fire department had Norm Smith come and survey the Dandelion Daycare, Dandelion Daycare property when they were originally looking at putting the firehouse there, and he thinks that actual pins were put in.
It had not, never been subdivided.
But it was never subdivided, correct.
That process is going to take at least two months, so that is a process that the school board, because you are on a record, should get going. Their next meeting is April 3rd.
Does that have to be the zoning committee?
Yeah. So that would be something that needs to actually start, start moving along right away because of the warnings that they have to have before they can actually approve a subdivision. They may be able to call special meetings to expedite the process?
We'll never have it sold by the 1st of July.
Well, maybe we could have it under contract. Now, I don't know how that...
I'm actively, you know, seeking buyers and I would, I would not say that that's 100% true, it's probably a good... It's, it's probably a good probability, but, um, I, I, I do know of some interest in the building, so the first thing we need to do is get it subdivided and determine how much land goes with it.
Now, we had talked about, um...
Can you get us a copy of what the lawyer dug up on that last time?
What the lawyer dug up on dandelion?
Yeah.
But do, do you remember any red flags? That's what you're thinking, or? No, just to have the information.
Some detail, yeah.
Now... Because even if there is not a private buyer, are we gonna consider selling it back to the town?
Then this discussion will have to start having with the town, and town is open to that discussion.
Okay.
Um, ultimately, that would probably be what the end result would be if there is no cash buyer, uh, a private buyer, cash buyer, but our, the goal for, for me right now, um, even though I'm, I'm not under contract to sell it or anything, is, is to find somebody that will actually pay money for the building so that the original intent is followed and, and we show Stockbridge that we are following into what the wish was for the original plan. So that, that's what I'm working towards, as hard as I can.
Now, of course, um, there is a little, some cost to subdividing, but would that fall under our budget, or would we try to hold on and include those in the cost of the sale to a private?
It could be that. It could also be considered as part of the merger. These merger funds is possible.
I'm wondering what the costs are you're talking about for subdividing, other than a permit?
Well, that's what I was wondering. I'm not sure what the costs are. I mean, I would just, um, the, I guess, lawyer's fees.
You'd have to have a survey.
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 Primarily it's all survey.
What?
It, primarily it's all a new survey.
So it'd be interesting to know what Gopher was, uh, talking about, that the fire department had it surveyed and, and Norm Smith had that information already. Would, is that something that he would, um, that, uh, would share with, uh, us, you think? Or would we have to have him re-survey it? I just don't know how it works with properties.
It depends on how much property you would like to be selling off of the elementary lot, whether those property lines would be same as, you know, suffice for what being bought.
Right.
I think the whole fifty acres would have to be surveyed, Nancy.
Could be, yes.
Normally, when there's a survey, it gets filed in the, in the town office. I actually went into the town office and I couldn't find it.
They probably just had Norm do it, but never filed it, because then the, nobody wanted that building as a fire department.
I mean, there's no requirement that it has to be filed, but if in fact he did survey it, then there was going to be sufficient property to accommodate that fire department.
Right, probably more than we necessarily need, would want subdivided off of that.
But they gotta...
Well, they were willing to subdivide for, for a certain amount, if I recall what it was.
Is this guy Norm still around?
Yes.
Maybe someone else speak to him.
Excuse me, there was an, a, original plot when it was a home, when it was a...
It was a family home.
It was all, it was this entire property was all part of it.
It wasn't ever a home?
It was a home.
When the elementary, after the elementary school was there, it was a home?
No, no.
Because Peter Gary...
Yes, there were several principals who lived in it.
The property was donated to the town in order for the elementary school to be built, I understand.
I don't think it was donated.
Oh, okay, maybe, maybe sold.
But it included, it included all of this property.
Yeah, and something about six acres is what I was understanding.
And there were several principals back in the sixties, I guess it was, that lived in that building.
Well, we knew a teacher who lived there, and I just thought they were renting it from a personal problem, you know, of, a person.
But it always parked the school. Easy enough to find.
So, um, I guess our stuffs are, we need to talk, we need to meet with zoning, but right?
Mason Wade.
Okay. One thought, uh, crossed my mind was that since our public trust fund has put so much funds into the school budget over the last ten-plus years, that maybe just a dollar transfer to the town would be a good idea for the, for the dandelion daycare building. And let the town do it, it wants to. I mean, the town was very generous in this process for so long, and I, I think it should be looked at.
Definitely. You tend to be unified more than that.
About what, getting?
If that would satisfy what they're...
If, if selling it back to the town for a dollar would satisfy?
Yeah.
But, um, we would maybe want to work out...
Voters, the voters voted the unified board to attempt to sell it.
Right.
To gain money to put down towards debt or bonded on this, this, that's how it was defined for the merger.
I don't think that they earmarked it specifically as you, that we needed to sell it so that we could pay down. I think that they wanted, they, they wanted us to sell it just because they were concerned about the liability of that building.
Okay.
That, that's my understanding of, of, but we, you know, definitely, it's nice to keep them in the conversation as well, uh, because we're all together, going to be all together, unless though we might need to be taking care of it ahead of time. So, uh, Joanne was saying that it's, there's not a lot of cost to subdividing, but you're, it's the, it's lawyer's fees and survey fees?
Primarily survey.
Absolutely expensive, that survey, but it has to be done.
Right.
Well, Stockbridge dealt enough about it, put it in an article of agreement, so we do have some kind of obligation to follow through on it before July first.
Right, so it would be nice if we could do, whoever we sell it to, maybe we could sell for the cost of subdividing, at least.
At least.
That would be...
Well, here we are, three months away, and we've been about it for, uh, the past four months, so really, we've had plenty of time to do it.
We need to figure out what the next steps are then. And then, and I guess that's contacting.
When is the zoning meeting?
April third, your next meeting. Is it uniform?
Unified.
Next Tuesday.
Unified, yeah.
What time are they at?
Seven. So there was no information.
That's, yeah, we're, we're meeting six thirty, well, what inform, what information? I think the conversation just needs to be started with the zoning committee. I mean, I don't know what information...
Patty just need to send one rep.
Maybe.
Yes.
Doing this here.
You can, is New Year?
Yeah, he's right there.
Oh. You can answer her question. Those we sort of suggested.
I heard. Hi!
Hi! What's the question?
We're discussing the dandelion daycare, and we're discussing the school trying to sell the dandelion daycare.
Right.
It, it is currently part of the, uh, Rochester School, six, is it six acres?
Not sure.
The elementary school plot is the same, has not been subdivided.
Right, so we're, I guess we're not looking at what the steps would be to...
Subdivide that.
Subdivide it, um, you know, it, it'd be nice to, it would be nice, I think, for, to be sold as a private sale and would be able to put the money back into the school budget, but, um, also, does the town have any interest in, um, owning the building? But that's not, kind of a separate question. So zoning, what is it, what, what, what is our next steps with looking into subdividing that property?
Well, it needs to be, you need to warn the adjoining property owners and have a hearing that's, um, warned, uh, probably, well, at least thirty days, right? Thirty-day warning to have a hearing to hear any concerns of any adjoining property owners.
Okay.
And after that happens, the, um, the application, do you know the timeline, Nancy, exactly?
I don't, I just know it has to be more than thirty days.
Thirty days, and then, but that's, it's, it's pretty tight, but it might...
It could probably, it's like your, your, your budget meeting. It's pretty tight.
So is there any reason to go to the zoning board?
Absolutely. If you want to make this happen on a expedited schedule, I think it's critical that at least someone comes to the zoning board to present it and to help. I, I, all I do is, the administrator is, is enact what they decide, so I'm not the decider, it's, uh, they're the ones to make that decision and set the schedules.
You could also get more information from Joan Pontius.
Yeah.
She'd be a good person, she's around.
She on the board?
She's on the board.
I have a pretty important question to make tonight, so, um...
I could think that, yeah.
Well, I'm, I mean, and that's, I mean, that's what we really need to do. We need to go forward with, right, dividing up this property and attempting to sell the dandelion.
But we told them in the articles that we would do.
Right. Um, if, if, would it satisfy the, I guess if we're going into the, uh, new district and the, um, sale of the dandelion is under contract, or would that satisfy, um, would you think that would cause problems, I guess?
No, I don't think so. I think as long as you're under contract, that would be, uh, a good way of moving. I mean, we don't have a lot of time, so...
Right.
But you're not under the contract of three months.
You might be able to, if, I mean, you're not, it's not like you're, uh, negotiating a price, right?
Yeah, right.
I mean, that's what takes the time, is going back and forth.
On private sale?
Right, the, um...
I think more importantly, we have to go to our voters on May fifteenth and be able to convince them that we are working in good faith to, to try to get this done. That's what's important.
First step is just flipping the subdivision.
And doing, and, um, and get a, have him come and, and evaluate the property, what's that called?
Appraisal.
Appraisal? No, a, uh, when you're, when you're the, looking at the property.
Who looking at it?
The survey.
Norm Smith.
Oh, survey.
Survey, thank you. Sorry, I just, I was like, my, my brain just...
Or we'll have to speak to him ultimately to see if he still has a survey.
Well, do we need to have a survey before we come to the, we wouldn't need it surveyed before we come to the zoning committee, would we? But the zoning committee would probably be very interested of what exactly we're trying to survey and what we're trying to break off.
Call call to him tomorrow morning would satisfy that question.
Okay.
But it's pretty obvious what we're trying to break off, how it would be split off, right?
Well, we're trying to split it up, how much of it? I, I, I mean, does it matter right now? I mean, but we...
I don't think it matters for the, um, setting things in motion.
Motion, okay. Okay. Your call, Norm Smith? Okay. And you'll go to the zoning meeting and speak to them about getting the, that in motion?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, those are my two big things on Rochester's to-do list, um, before, um, and I guess we'll just keep in contact with the lawyer about...
I'll contact them again tomorrow and find out on the two items that you asked me, which was the fourth.
Okay.
And also a copy of the, what the lawyer and, has already researched, so we don't have to revisit that.
Right, okay. Uh, is there any other things we're not thinking of on that to-do list right now that we need to be moving forward on?
I can't believe it.
Okay, well, I'm sure last minute there will be.
So let's move to new business, number nine. Do we have any new business? Discussion items? I don't know who put these on here.
There's just one, yes.
My discussion items. Eleven, public communication and comment. Jess?
I was just wondering what's being done about, um, some of the historical items, trophies, awards, equipment, uniforms, is, is there a committee at the school that's handling the, the repurposing or giving back to owners and donating equipment? Is, is there a team or anything that's working on that? Tony is involved in a group that is getting, getting together to create the, um, graduation and also a kind of a closing ceremony type thing, maybe? I don't, not sure if you're working towards any of that type of stuff, maybe you could also speak to where you got committee?
I don't think anything has been firmed up. We have mentioned it, but it's just one of those things that we, we know needs to be done.
Well, if there's any, um, committee or anything, I mean, I, I would publicize it because there's a lot of alumni in the valley that would love their, their plaques back, you know? We have some here, there's trophies, and we would, we would be happy to help with that process to make sure these things are preserved and go back to places where they can be swooned over.
Or can they be handed over to the Historical Society?
Bonnie asked the Historical Society to come down and go through, uh, the buildings, looking at things, and we actually have done some of that. We haven't seen everything. I don't think she knows where everything is, uh, but she's right, she's very concerned that things might disappear or, or get dumpstered, and so she's, Bonnie is right on top of it.
Good, yeah.
Yeah, there's been questions about some of the books in the library, especially the high school levels going to the town library. I know the librarian here has asked if that might happen, that they could add to the collection at the town library, because some of these books, because we're gonna be a pre-K through six, won't be, uh, needed for, for that age group, but, uh, I don't think there's any decision, but that, that ought to be talked about, uh, what we're gonna do with them. And I know Bonnie's talked to me about, uh, some of the memorabilia too, which I didn't really have an answer to, so...
And that is all, um, the question of this board, correct?
Yep.
Hold on, sorry, Mason?
That's right. Uh, could you speak about the, uh, school fours? What's the plan for this?
Yep, the school fours is actually, uh, being reviewed, uh, by our lawyer right now, so unfortunately, at this meeting, we don't have, uh, the information. I expect, though, within the next week or so, they'll be able to get us, um, they're reviewing the deed and reviewing the articles of agreement and, um, advising us what's gonna be the, the right way to handle it, so, I'm sorry, I don't have more information, but stay tuned, we will.
Did they look into that during option one and said it had to go with the merger?
Uh, they're reviewing all that.
They did that three other times. This is a three-year visit, going to cost us more money to have the same opinion done again. And then, it, it's pretty clear in the deed what it says, and that is not what the opinion was during option one, that, uh, the lawyer said. He said that it was going to go with the union, so...
You need him to clarify that.
Well, yeah, and then, and that was...
We had to clarify the last time!
But he has been charged with that, uh, right now, and he's, he's looking into that right now, so, stay tuned. We'll get you answered very soon, I promise.
Any further public communication?
Is there any plan in place for the dandelion daycare to be put on the MLS? Is there any plan in place for the Dan Line daycare to be put on the MLS market so that it gets more exposure, or is it just going to be sold word of mouth?
What would it take to put it on, I guess what costs would be associated?
Well, there would, there would be no cost, you'd be selecting a realtor, and I'd like to think since it is for a town and a school entity, that, you know, you would not be charged by a realtor for selling the property, you can have it put up on MLS by just about any realtor, but it doesn't take a whole lot of time and energy, some photos, some measurements, the town lister card, and.
But you have to have the land, you have to know.
You could say approximately, it's, it's going to be what, approximately a quarter of an acre, you, you can get it up there so that somebody's out there looking around, it, it'll be advertised, I suggest that, that we look into doing that as well.
Yeah, makes sense.
Do you have to go through the subdivision process before you start listing things?
No, it, it can be listed under the premise that it will be subdivided to be subdivided, you give an approximate quarter acre, whatever is going to go with it, but the subdivision would have to be done before closing.
Well, if it's, I mean, if all, all it is is committing to a realtor, there's not any additional cost, and the realtor is going to sell, to provide their services, to try and get as much exposure as we can, or do we want to just try to do private sale?
No, I, we're not, I think we have to, have to advertise it at some point.
Sure, well, I don't think.
We have to sign a contract with a realtor.
Right, well, due to essence of time, maybe if that is, if that is the direction we want to go, I would recommend that we, that we hire a real estate agent and do that. No.
I'll do it.
It's like, there's one right here. I, I would, I, she has a vested interest in this town and this school, and.
Are you on the select board?
I am.
Is that a conflict?
Now, there's people on select board, I don't, I don't believe in this, I'd be looking out for the better of the town.
She could recuse herself if the issue came up, she could recuse herself.
Mason.
And I'm not charging.
So at what point is it decided that the town's not interested in the property?
Well, and I guess that would be the question, do we want it, are we trying to offer it to the town first and to a private sale second, are we trying to stop, try to private sale first and get some revenue to come back into?
What did the voters approve, was trying to sell it, correct?
Just selling it.
And if it couldn't be sold, it would be offered back to the town?
Right.
That's what the articles of the.
It, it states that any, any property that any, that is owned by the school district, if at any point is no longer used for educational purposes and the district is determined by the district that is no longer used for educational purposes, it is offered back to the town for a dollar.
Yes.
They're, they're the first ones to get it.
But we talk about trying to sell it.
What interests would the town have, I guess I would be going to a select board meeting and speaking with them, right?
For dollars, sounds like a good deal.
I know, and again, due to, you know, it would be nice to, to cover the costs of the subdividing and any costs that are associated.
They would have to pay for it if we gave a buy to them.
She's talking about now, preliminary costs.
Right.
I think that's what you're saying.
Is that, is the Dan Line daycare something that the town sees, how do I put this? Well, more than valuable, but something that they, they would really, would think would be in the town's vested interest at this point to go back to the town rather than to try to do a private sale.
Well, there was some, perhaps that would be a place to house the Historical Society.
Okay, do we have Historical Society members here?
Yes.
Is that something that has any interest to them?
Well, I think that it only was broached with us casually the other night, so the Historical Society really doesn't know anything about the interests they might have in it.
So we don't have to move that stuff very far?
Right, it's amazing. Take care.
It's going to shoot.
Just the, okay.
In terms of the town owning another building and being responsible for another building, I, 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 I think myself we have discussed it as a, as a group, I don't know to what extent the town wants to maintain ownership of a building, if the town could, if that was a step to take that ownership of that building and then to turn around and sell it and use that money to offset other expenses of town, that's, that could be, now, is there a restriction in the deed, has it transferred to the unified district yet, or is this would be happening before then, so it wouldn't be restricted by the however many year clause to, before it could be sold separately?
I believe so, I believe that would be correct.
By July first, and then it goes into the unified hands.
Right, and.
It's right in the article five, it's pretty specific.
Right, Joan is specifically talking about the town being able to resell Dan Line in certain, under five years, which is in the article.
Not if the, not if it's transferred before July first.
If it is transferred before, before July first.
That's right.
Right.
That's why, by, July first is an important date.
Right, that's what we're just.
Because then people in this room can decide, we don't have, and Stockbridge is concerned enough about taking on more facilities so that they add it article five, and why we waited so long to be dealing with this, I just don't understand it, so. Our Rochester school board will seek to sell Dan Line daycare building prior to June thirty twenty eighteen.
Well, here we are, this is what we're doing right now.
The question is, do you want to sell it, or do you want to turn it over to the town? What's more important to you?
We're not going to be able to sell it by July.
Well, you could get a contract, probably, you might be able to get.
Things moving that quickly, Patty?
It's springtime.
Realtors are always.
Well, I wouldn't say we would not have a contract by June thirtieth, that's, that's, that's a pretty closed-door statement, so, I, you know, hey, maybe.
And I think particularly if there's already a survey available, you don't have to go through a survey.
Well, I mean, just, here we are, what's, what's best for our town, you know, it's going to be the best use of that space, to try to sell it privately, or?
I think the quickest and cleanest is to sell it back to the town. And we don't have a deadline to worry about subdivision.
Well, you still have to subdivide it if you sell it back to the town.
Yeah, but we don't have a deadline at that point.
July first.
If we sell it to the town, we've beaten that deadline.
We can't sell it to the town unless we're selling it.
Right, but again.
I don't think the lawyer would drop a new deed if they didn't have.
Again, that's.
The town's not even sure if they want it yet, they need to talk about it, you know, get the subdivision going, and I think, you have the ideas out there floated, it will be in the minutes, people will read about it, and.
I think it would, I think it would not hurt for us to put more exposure out there, that we have this building that is for sale, is anybody interested, do they have some awesome idea, maybe somebody wants to buy it and run it as a daycare, doubtful, hopeful, um. You don't know unless you get it out there. I guess that's what I'm thinking, I, and then at the same time, we should also have a discussion with the town as to what they see the value in, in that building, what would be good for them, and, and if it's something they're interested in, and we're the sellers, ultimately we get, we can decide who we want to sell it to. That'd be my recommendation.
Do you have an established selling price at this point?
We have a market analysis of what they think it might be worth.
Well, do we have to make a motion or anything about contracting with a, a real estate agent?
I will be shook, if that's where you want to go. So move.
Should we contract with real estates? Anybody in mind?
Yeah, so, okay, I'd like to make a motion that we contract with Patty Harvey as a real estate agent to, to list the Dan Line daycare building and property for sale.
What, would your company not do, Ryan, what's your company? What's your commission?
No, no, for the town.
It's a good deal.
Yeah, and you'll advertise it?
I will.
Just the MLS or other places?
MLS, Zillow, Trulia, Realtor.com, and the Herald.
Do you have a contract with it?
No. Well, pending contract approval.
Excuse me, go ahead, what's your name?
Yeah, just a point of clarification here, wouldn't the first step be to find out if the town was interested? And if they're not, then it would be the choice of the school board to put it up for sale in the, in the private world, but I, didn't Amy just read that you had to offer it to the town first?
That is, when we join, when we come into the new district on July one, that is the agreement in the new district, once it is all, all of our properties, we will own Stockbridge School, Stockbridge property.
Don't we have two of the three select board here? How would you?
There's not a one meeting.
It's not a one meeting, we don't even know each other right now.
I understand, but how would we get the pokes of the town to find out this?
Go to the meeting?
Put it on the agenda for the next town meeting.
You don't want to say it. You don't want to say it.
The next select board meeting?
He said town meeting.
She meant the select board, okay, and who do we contact about putting that on the agenda?
Joanne.
Okay.
She's here.
You can do a client offer anyway.
Yeah, this doesn't keep us from going to the town, doesn't that, anyway?
No, not at all, it opens all your avenues, we're trying to move the property.
Right.
What if?
If you just get two hundred thousand dollars for it and sell it.
In a heartbeat, we can put that back into the, to the budget, that would be great.
That's a, that's wrong, not for the candidate.
We also have a special meeting to, in advance of April ninth.
We could, well, I was saying we could have a special meeting concurrent with the planning board meeting, so we could all sit together and discuss this. That's coming up just next, next Tuesday night, right?
We have time, we have time to warn that.
Yeah, we just have to warn that three days ahead of time.
We're, we're willing to work with the school board to expedite this.
I just cannot be at that meeting because I have to be at a budget meeting that night, but I'm.
I could be there.
And unfortunately, it's in Stockbridge at six thirty, during five thirty, I could be there.
Well, the planning board meeting is in six.
Yeah, I have to be in Stockbridge for six thirty meeting, but maybe I can.
Somebody said seven.
Okay.
Six. Can you contact?
Okay, so, um.
We have this special board meeting for five thirty, we could have that conversation if you dare move on to the planning board meeting.
You, okay, you'd be willing to do that, or I could contact Joanne about the logistics of that?
I could, I could probably do that.
Okay.
What's that?
To have a select board meeting on April third at five thirty, and then followed by the.
Zoning board.
Planning board, I just, planning board. No, it's the planning board and the zoning committee, the same thing, just two different names for it?
It's Tuesday, actually.
No, April third, Tuesday. Tuesday. Okay, thank you very much. Do you still have a motion for contracting with a realtor open, or?
It was moved and seconded.
Yeah, and I, I redid it so it was specifically. Just wanted to make sure I have the minutes right. Yeah. Right, we, there's a motion and a seconded right now.
End discussion.
End discussion, all right, discussion.
Any further discussion?
So Amy, you do need to get on the agenda of the planning board?
Yes.
And Joan, I think Joan Pontius does the agendas.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Who needs to execute your contract?
What's that?
Who needs to sign your contract?
Three of you right now, all three of you, but I can dig all three of you up and it can be done electronically, so all I need to do is get the emails of all three of you and boom, I could have it out to you in the morning. This is the name of the program.
Does Joan Pontius have a specific email, is that how you contact her, do I just call her at her house, or?
Ask Joanne.
Ask Joanne, okay, I'll see you now. Okay.
Okay.
Any other public communication?
Do the other two members of the school board have to sign this agreement?
I think I do have to have all owners sign, so yeah, there would be two others, wouldn't there?
Megan.
Megan.
And Frank. We all have White River Valley SU emails, it's very easy to talk about.
I think so, but I, I don't, I'm not sure, I mean, we haven't done.
Unless you want to vote one person has to go to.
If you guys decide to have somebody do it, it's fine.
Well, makes a little more sense, but I'm sorry, I'm.
If you guys decide that you want to designate one person to sign, sign that contract, you can, that can happen, just make a motion to do that.
Help son.
So you're going to.
Make a motion.
Okay. I make a motion that Jeff be the point man on the.
The signature party.
The signature party for the, for the school board for the contract with the real savings.
Any further discussions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any further public communication? We know our next meeting date, correct?
Did you just change it to May?
Well. You have it as May first, the first Tuesday of May, so are you not meeting in April?
Correct, because it would be April third would be our first meeting, because we changed
Correct, because it would be April 3rd would be our first meeting, cause we changed our, um, regular scheduled meetings to the first Tuesday of the month. Now we all have another meeting to go on the 3rd. I have a feeling we are gonna need to do a special meeting, um, after we meet with the, um, planning board. But the next regular scheduled meeting will be the first Tuesday in May. But again, I'm sure there will be special meeting, another special meeting.
You haven't designated a time yet, you're just making that the day?
Oh, the time was before the Rochester-Stockbridge district meeting, so I believe that we decided 5:30.
Your meeting, as I said.
You had originally posted your, or put on here that your meeting was gonna be at 6. Is that still the time?
No, we were gonna do it before the district meeting. And I just, I'm unsure what time the district meeting is, if it's 6:00 or 6:30. I kinda, I thought it was 6:30, is when our regular district meeting was gonna be.
5:30 would work.
So 5:30 would work, cause that'd give us, that'd be an hour before. Thought I had... Yeah, that's the special. So 5:30... Be, 5:30, the first Tuesday of the month before the district meeting will be our regular scheduled school board meetings.
And the location will be?
Alternating before, between Stockbridge and Rochester.
It'll be?
It'll be different.
Future agenda items, those table? Well, I make a motion to adjourn.
Sure, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.